It is 9:01 Tuesday morning, the 2nd of May, and we are here for our Tuesday Morning Business Meeting. And you're doing the invocation, no? Oh, there you are.
Yes.
Bruce, you're doing the invocation. Good morning.
Good morning. Our Heavenly Father, we come before you today to give you honor and praise, for you are worthy. You are the source of all that is good and have blessed us all here with such a beautiful place to call home. Thank you, God. We thank you for this opportunity to gather here for this important meeting, and we ask for your blessing. We ask that you would guide and direct this meeting so that it's full of wisdom, productivity, and respect for one another. I also ask that you would protect all of the county employees as they work to make our lives here safe and secure. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. All men pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment may begin now. David Mann.
I apologize, oh, David Mann for the record. I apologize for only having handwritten notes. I was really busy this weekend and couldn't get to the Spirit Lake thing, which I wish I could have. But anyway, I wasn't able to attend several additional meetings last week. They had me wondering about stuff. Just things just seem strange. I've heard that the county code is equivalent to law for dealing with things in the county. But a couple of things that went on at the meetings made me wonder. The zone change across from encoder. The interesting part that I saw there was that in relationship to what I said earlier about the suburban zone on Baldi being inappropriately in place, in this case, it was the planning department that said, oh, there's never been any urban water there anyway, so let's change the zone. Well, if there never was any urban water, why was it zoned suburban? Urban water is supposed to be there or likely to be built in the near future. Okay? The second thing that just really blew me away in terms of, are we following the code? On the RINCO Loop wetland setback issue. The code has a 40-foot wetland setback that can be modified to 20 feet if the wetland is a subpar wetland. I'm not sure what the exact terminology is. But in the meeting about that modification, we didn't stop at 40 feet. We didn't stop at 20 feet. We put buildings on top of the wetlands using helical coils that the commissioners admitted they didn't really know much about. So I guess my question is, we have a hard setback. It's 40 feet for any wetlands. It's 20 feet if it's a substandard or whatever the term is wetland. Why did we just throw those out the window with technology that we're not sure about? That's about it.
So with respect to the 40-foot setback, that was something that I commented on throughout that meeting as to what did we use? And I think that's a good opportunity for our community to talk to planning because they gave the recommendation. And I commented that I couldn't see where we were showing that we can reduce that setback, which was minimum. It didn't need to say shall. So that might be a question that I was planning to get their understanding on that.
Monica. Name for the record.
Monica Gunner. Couple questions again about the Fair Board. I attended this meeting, I think it was three weeks ago, and you guys had voted to let the Fairground, the Fair Board, pick where they want to have this campground. That was voted on and approved that the Fair, that the Fair Board would decide where to put their campground. Now apparently, it's going farther to where we're back to square one with the whole thing. The Fair Board knows where they want this campground. Why are we, why did we vote last three weeks ago to let the Fairground decide? Can I ask Luke, have you had your promised meeting with the three commissioners and the Fair Board together in a group to discuss the placement of this campground? That meeting that you promised, have you had that?
I have worked with staff to schedule.
No, the three of you together.
Thanks, Monica.
No, I'm just asking, have you had that promised meeting? You can't answer that?
I can't answer, but.
And the answer is no?
Thank you for answering for, now, you know what? Go ahead, Monica. I'm here to listen.
Well, you're also here to answer questions. Okay, then, why haven't the three of you commissioners together met with the seven Fair Board members to discuss and agree upon the placement of this campground? I'm just asking because it really blows my mind that they are not being involved in this process. There are seven of them, volunteers that do amazing work. Why, why aren't they being involved in this process like was agreed upon three weeks ago and voted for? Can you guys answer that? Not you.
Mr. Chairman.
Why won't he answer? Can you answer?
I'm actually happy to answer that question.
Okay, I'm just asking.
I don't want to take from your time, so when you are done, I will respond.
I'm done. That was my only question, is why aren't we meeting with the Fair Board fully? All three of you, not just Luke.
Jessica Frye for the record.
Go ahead.
I went to their very first meeting yesterday.
I'm asking Luke, Jessica, yes.
Just letting you know that. This is the first time they ever met. It was a nice meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr.?
You ready, Mr. Chairman?
Can I actually, if that's a presentation and we're only given the community one hour, I don't know that maybe he could slide his in his update.
I didn't, yes, Mr. Chairman.
Brian, how are you today?
Good, sir. How are you? Good morning, Commissioners. I would just like to circle back from a few weeks ago to reiterate a comment. I realize timing can take a while, but there are, of course, as always, ongoing applications for comprehensive plan amendments, zone changes, things of that nature. And these are always very critical to the fabric of our communities. So I'd like to just once again request respectfully that there would be a recommendation by the board of county commissioners to the Planning Commission to reengage with the subarea plan committees, to ask them to come and offer input into the process of the recommendations that they're going to be making for comp plan amendments. I know that's ongoing, but there are some very important sections or chapters coming up. And I really think it would behoove the county to reengage with the folks that were originally a part of that process to make sure that the information that they've presented, some of which had to be incomplete because of the time being cut short, unannounced to those committees. So it would be, I think, beneficial, once again, to make sure that clear information's been presented so it can be fully considered before an actual amendment is recommended to the board for their consideration. So I would greatly appreciate it if that hasn't already happened, if you would be recommending that the Planning Commission take that under serious consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wayne Martin. How's Wayne today?
Wayne's doing fairly well.
Name for the record.
I'm old, I forget. No, my name is Wayne Martin, for the record. Again, I will request for you commissioners that if you would consider five minutes for comment time, that would totally eliminate any, you know, sharing of additional time to people. It would give most people that opportunity to finish all of their comments and all. I do have a concern with items that have already been on the comp plan approved that looking at it and reading the different subcommittee reports and their inputs, that there is items, in my opinion, are missing or could have been reconsidered or looked at, including one of them, folks will be coming up with this month, is agriculture. And I was at that one and making recommendations in it. You know, it was like, nope, we're not going to do it because. So, thank you.
Thank you. Dan Rose.
Good morning. Morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Dan Rose for the record. I commented to the solid waste project continuation from last week. I asked a third question last week under the solid waste agenda item and received no answer. The purpose of the question was to ascertain whether or not a public hearing or additional future agenda item might be in order. I respectfully request an answer to the question in order to decide whether or not to make a Bonner County Ordinance 1200B request for a future agenda item. The answer to the question is permitted by BOCO Ordinance 1200B. And the question is, will the increase in expenses negatively affect other advertised solid waste facility improvements for the plan? That was, that was one question. I'd like to ask this question also. Does the current household hazardous facility meet all federal requirements? The current one.
To the best of my knowledge.
To the best of your knowledge. And does the proposed household hazardous waste building improvement, being the bid schedule items B and C that were not acted upon, which were omitted or eliminated, help to meet that federal requirement? Or do they elevate the federal requirement? And so I don't know if you can answer that one. If they meet it, it would be to elevate it. If they don't meet it, they would have to be to meet it.
Yeah, it'd be a Barbara Melissa question.
Okay, so perhaps you can, how do we say? Get those answers and give us another future agenda item on the solid waste where that can come up and be answered? Because I'd like to look into that. Commissioner Omot, to state last week that you were excited that this is a great project is troubling. The solid waste fact is the improvement plan of 2019-2020 was arguably a great project by looking at the vote count prior to last week's notice that we're receiving less, far less than what was advertised in that presentation period in 2021, because we're not getting a lot of it. So if it was arguably a great project then, it's certainly not a great project now. Minimum receipt of a voter-approved package wrapped in a vote-high accolade is highly discouraging. It's an insult to the taxpayer. The B O C C sold the taxpayer an annual increase to $185 based on the content of the plan, 2021-2019-2020 Plan Resolution 2135 in the May 2021 COVID-19 era ballot language. I'll give you to next week to identify which improvements in bid A through E do not currently, not currently, pre-bid acceptance meet federal requirements. Again, I request a solid waste agenda item for next week or the week after to answer these questions. Secondly, Mr. Chairman, the answer to my question last week relating to the issue of fair and natural resource board selection was answered with dissenting opinion. I'll also ask again in another way. Mr. Chairman, please correct me if I'm mistaken. You alone, without anyone else's recommendations, selected the nominees that would receive interviews for the respective board position, which ultimately resulted in the names being placed on last week's B O C C agenda item. Is that correct?
I selected them, we all interviewed them, we all discussed them.
Question was, if I'm mistaken, you alone, without anyone else's recommendation, selected the nominees that would be receiving interviews and then ultimately put on the agenda. Is that correct?
I probably did, but we can all suggest this one get interviewed or that one get interviewed.
Okay, I'll ask the other commissioners if you could answer yes or no only to that question, as it is a sensitive item. Did anyone else, other than the three board members, have any involvement in the recommendations for the names of the Fair Board appointees or the Natural Resource Board appointees?
So I'm not going to answer yes or no because I want to say I didn't give any recommendations for the board. I asked that everyone who applied be interviewed.
I like that.
Sorry, so I didn't recommend anyone. I said everyone should be.
No, did you receive a recommendation from anyone else other than either one or? Did you receive a recommendation from anyone else?
I received a lot of feedback from members of Bonner County on both, actually.
Okay, so if you say you did and Commissioner Bradshaw is saying that he's the one that did it, then how, how does what you got enter that paper when he says he's the only one that did it?
Mr. Rose, I said I received a lot of feedback.
But you didn't communicate.
No, I did communicate.
Then if you communicated, he got the recommendation from you and not necessarily.
We sat down as a board and had this conversation.
Okay, well, that doesn't square with what the chairman just stated. And I'd like to also add, am I on three minutes or five?
You're passed, I believe.
Okay, I'll save it for next week. Thank you.
Thanks. George. Name for the record.
Good morning. George Garrick for the record. Is it George or Georgie?
I've never said Georgie.
After the last meeting, you called me Georgie out in the hall. I was just wondering if I could call you Stevie now? Or maybe.
Call me anything you want to.
Or maybe Governor.
There are seats up front if you want to come in. Okay.
If this is the direction your comments go in, you can go ahead and sit back down.
That's okay. Yesterday, I exchanged two emails with Jessie and I CC'd them to you three. The first one says, good morning. The first one, I said, oh, I'm sorry. Jessie sent me an email saying, good morning. The B O C C would like to thank you for your interest in the Natural Resources Committee. The positions have been filled at this time, but please continue to check back with us for openings and opportunities. Thank you. Then I replied, and I CC'd Luke and you and it's Stevie. Thanks for letting me know. Please, could you tell me the names of everyone that applied? How many got interviewed? How many were voted on? And the outcome of the votes? And then she replied, I will forward your email to Veronica to be treated like a records request. If I tracked Luke correctly last week, and that's hard to do because of all the non-secretary logical fallacies he commits, commissioners don't need to disclose the votes they cast for volunteer positions. He said they have a constitutional right to keep their votes private. Is that correct? Am I stating your opinion correctly?
You are not. That is a gross misrepresentation of fact because all of these votes were taken in an open meeting before the public. But that's a gross misrepresentation, which, that's your purview.
Of the ones that Chairman Bradshaw selected, now I'm talking about all of the other ones, all the other ones.
Can I clarify what I think you're asking? You're asked, you asked last week for us to disclose who we voted on in executive session before it went to the session when it was presented as the three names. And that is when you got the response that that particular vote was not something that was going to be disclosed. It wasn't the open meeting portion. You were looking for the executive session.
So what is your opinion on that, Commissioner Wayne?
Well, I think that there needs to be a process by which we select people on these boards. We say that we have difficulty having people volunteer, but when we have a flood of volunteers applying, I don't think we're respecting that they applied by not communicating, not interviewing them, and not including the public in some portion of that because these boards sit for three and four years. And so it's reasonable for us to have a meaningful dialogue of what the process is so that it's consistent across all of the committees.
So since you're limiting us to three minutes, I'm not going to be able to get to my second question. But I'm assuming that this is an hour-long meeting. If, if the entire hour isn't used by questions, is it the case that we, if we've already spoken once, we'll have an opportunity to come back and speak?
Yes, but go ahead and ask your second question since I gave a long answer for the one you asked me.
Well, I will eliminate the long email that I sent, but it was basically asking how you guys came to be on the, on the different positions that you represent, which, how you came to be assigned to the various different liaison positions. I didn't get a, a full response, so I requested it again. But basically, Commissioner Williams, could you please give me your views on the assignment process? And it's my understanding that the liaison for natural resources is you, Luke. Is that right?
Correct.
And what about the Forest Service? Do they have a, because I went to a special meeting with the Forest Service manager, Jessie, I forget her name. You were there. And at that meeting, I asked her, she was going on about how the Forest Service is funded for fire and recreation, but there was no money evidently allocated for enforcement. And I think that's actually might be the first time that you and ever, you know, I ever agreed on anything that there actually should be money for enforcement. I would just like to point out that since you are natural resources, here's the most recent issue, April 23, 2023, Conservation Flyer. Here's a press release from Wild Earth Guardians. And here is a almost 50-page document that talks about the over the services recreation plan. And all three of those basically point out that it's not worth the paper it's written on because there are all kinds of violations. That's certainly something that you should be concerned about, I think. And just so that you know, I'm going to be seen next week for a conference called Responsible Recreation: Pathways, Practices, and Possibilities. And, and this is a group of folks that are actually interested in the environment. And I was wondering, Chairman, since you are going to be handling the, I guess you're going to be responsible for handling the Natural Resources Exploitation and Extraction Committee assignments, whether or not you're going to list the things that you're going to assign these volunteers to do and whether or not one of them is actually going to be concerning the recreational impacts on the, on the county. Thank you.
Thank you.
So to answer your question on how things were assigned, there was some predetermination when I came. And so I have not accepted the idea that someone is over a group because that's not the function of commissioners. So I think you would have to ask each individual commissioner of what they are identifying they're over. I pushed for the idea of liaisons having to discuss in the open meeting back and forth, but that didn't get accepted. So you have to ask individually. I don't have anything of substance that I liaison with.
Thank you, and I would, but I'm quite confident that I would get it.
Okay, all right.
Ms. Sherry, your turn.
My turn. Sherry Devali for the record. I'm just curious, as I'm looking at these agendas and stuff, and I see that you discuss resolutions, et cetera. And I'd like to ask that the resolutions and other documents that y'all are discussing or voting on or whatever be attached to the agenda so the public can see it. Since the public isn't getting a copy of any of that stuff, I think it would be nice if the public got to see exactly the wording that y'all are voting on. Sorry? Well, the link would be nice, but this doesn't give me a link. This gives me a, it can write it out, and I'd have to go and type it in. But if I had a copy of the document while I'm sitting here, that would benefit me greatly. I would appreciate that. And I was wondering about some of the other meetings during the week, if we can get them on Zoom or at least YouTube, such as last Thursday's meeting. That would have been nice for people to actually see it. You know, I mean, they're going to get to hear it because I'm going to put it up, but it would have been nice to let them see it while it was happening. So, and I don't think that, that would actually cost any extra money than what y'all are spending now. Or if I'm wrong, please let me know.
So I'll put those two, I think those are reasonable to be put on the agenda for discussion and decision.
That would be awesome. I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
So the two will be two, and I know there are people that actually request the packet that we look at for the meeting.
I have, and I have never received it, so.
So we can, I'll put that and then a decision to YouTube all of the meetings so that you guys can watch it in that fashion. YouTube or rumble, depending on where they.
Whatever y'all want, so long as it's available to everybody. That would be nice.
I'll put those two items on the agenda.
Next.
Spencer Hutchings. So seeing that there was another kind of flip-flop on the fairgrounds thing, got me kind of wondering. And I'm just curious, are either of you under any physical duress or financial pressure for these decisions you're making? I mean, is somebody threatening? I don't know. I mean, is somebody threatening you guys or something? Or are you under some financial incentive to make these decisions? Because it seems like it doesn't make any logical sense. Okay, you make a decision and everybody kind of relaxes and says, okay, they're going to do the right thing. And then while nobody's looking, you flip it around the other way. You've done it a couple of times, what, two, three times now? And I'm just wondering if you're under some kind of threat or threat of force or under some kind of financial pressure? Because it doesn't make any sense to me. And if there's some kind of logical reason that explains this, I'd love to know. I mean, because I don't understand.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure I admit threat.
Okay, so, so I'm not saying you got bribed. I'm just wondering, I mean, because it just doesn't make sense. I mean, does it make sense to you guys, all the flops that you've made? Does it make sense that you've told the public you're going to do one thing and then when the public's not looking, you switch it back the other way? Does it make sense? I mean, didn't you think somebody would question it? Didn't you think it would be, you know, brought under some scrutiny? I mean, I seriously think the Bonner County Sheriff or the county prosecutor, somebody needs to look into it to see if you guys are under some kind of pressure or if there's some kind of incentive being put on you. Because it does. Because it doesn't make any sense. And again, there's, there's no reply, none. And I'm just telling you guys, it doesn't make sense, and that's why people keep asking questions. I'm sorry, what'd you say?
I replied.
I think Luke said it was the fourth vote at that point.
That was the fourth vote. So, and 75% of them have been the same. But I'm going to respond in my commissioners' report, in my commissioners' report so that I don't take time from the public, and I will answer them. But in the, in the words of Mr. Rose, it is an insult to the taxpayer, from my perspective, to have millions of dollars of deferred maintenance on a property that is the real property of Bonner County. And we have an opportunity to generate revenue that does not come out of the taxpayer's wallet. And so you asked a question, if I may.
Not good.
So you asked a question. So I personally will, for the most part, always vote with something that I believe is good for the taxpayer. Now, I understand that there are people who find that difficult to understand because we're having a conversation how this has been voted on four times already, and I believe it's on the agenda, for a fifth time today. Now, 75% of those votes have been identical. I recognize that there are some folks who are not. It's almost like we are in a country of 330 million people, and there is a variety of opinions. But my opinion in protecting the taxpayer's wallet is very consistent, and that is why I voted the way I did. And I'm very happy to vote in the interest of not raising taxes and improving the fairgrounds.
So you think it's, it's in the vested interest of the county to go into the business of operating RV parks? Just at the fairgrounds or all over the county? Do you think that's good for the, the business community in the county that the fairgrounds and the county is going into business against people who do operate RV parks privately?
I do think it is in the interest, and you know, the largest group of individuals who operates campgrounds in the state of Idaho is the state of Idaho. And we do that so that our citizens and the taxpayers can enjoy the natural beauty of where we live. For example, if you look at the major RV campgrounds that are in Bonner County, they are primarily ran by the state or the interests so that people can recreate. And yes, I stand by that. I support people recreating.
Okay. I didn't realize there was so much natural beauty over at the fairgrounds, in between the fairgrounds and the sheriff's department. But, you know, I, I haven't spent an extensive amount of time there. I've only parked my car there. But it's still, you know, if, if I'm off on this and it makes sense to you guys, I mean, I really wish you'd explain it because you still haven't explained it. And it still doesn't make any sense. And if I'm wrong, you guys can all tell me to shut up, but.
You're right.
Okay.
A hundred percent.
Thank you.
Not a hundred percent. I don't know.
Okay, no, no argument. All right, next. Name for the record. It'll pick you up.
It makes me feel better. Dottie Glass for the record. I just wanted to give some information. I went to the meeting on Monday with the fair, a fair board. It was a workshop. I've never attended one. So it's just for information. The meeting went well. They had four agenda items. One was someone from the library, vendors that are for the fair, coming up for the fair. The Navy didn't show because they're not going to do any fairs statewide, and the draft horses. The meeting was very nice. Luke only stayed a little while. He left. Scott Bauer was there, and I had to leave after an hour and a half and talking there, talking about the draft horses. So I don't know if there was any other discussion. But the meeting went fine, just FYI. And, you know, I'm sorry, Luke, but everything is I, 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 I. You represent us, 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 and you make decisions on I, 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 I. And it's very disturbing because you are my representative, and you're, you're not getting my response. And all these people that you've interviewed, I don't, we don't know who they are, but there's a lot of us that come to these meetings and are very vocal, for all of you, very vocal. And it still seems to be going the other way, except for one person here. So please, take away I, 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 I. We voted you in, so you represent us, not your own personal agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Sheriff Dan Rose again. I didn't get a chance to ask, that's the second question, so maybe I can do it here. Fortunately, Commissioner Omata kind of opened the door for it. I'd like to make the connection to the fairground budget and the solid waste budget. And in that solid waste budget, you'll recall, there were several meetings, and it was a well-advertised, how do we say, marketing effort to get that thing through. And it had to be to get it through. And in that process, the, the budget was extensive, and how do we say? I'd say really complete. Even though it didn't pan out, it was a valiant effort. I requested the budget for the fairgrounds. And everybody out there listening has the same budget response from that document request that I have. You say you have nothing, it's because they also have nothing. So Luke, how, Commissioner Omata, excuse me, how does, how are you able to say that you're willing to act in the best interest of the taxpayer when you have no budget to make a foundational response to you're doing the best thing for the taxpayer? There's no budget for it. Whatever's going to happen there for the next 20, 25 years is not on paper. It was for the solid waste proposal. So why is that? And how do you get to say that this is not going to cost us money, potentially? The other issue regarding the state being in the campground business might be true. There's a lot of things that the state does that are not constitutional. I would suggest there may be a lot of things that the state does that are not even legal. So when we say the states in the, in the RV business, the rub that we have, when you say, and you say the state is your reasoning for doing all this stuff, is the Republican platform philosophy does contradict a state being in the business against private entities. That's the rub. So if you agree to the Republican Party platform, you have to say state has to keep their distance. You're not willing to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Mr. Arn. How are you today?
Old.
And it ain't for system.
That's right. Fred Arn for the record. I, I've heard you mention several times that this is a, a business that benefits the taxpayers, the RV park out at the fairgrounds. Have you done, I started a couple of businesses, and each time I started a business, I looked at what the potential was. And when I talked to people about getting money to finance my business, they wanted to know what studies I'd done. Are there any studies to indicate that the RV park is going to turn a profit, that is a business that is going to be a viable business before we start spending money on it? I mean, it would seem to me you'd want to do some sort of business plan, some sort of research indicating. I, I agree that there's not a heck of a lot there for RVers to come and look at and enjoy as far as natural resources go. So my question is, is, is there any sort of research that you can show the public that would, that would show that there's a need and a potential viable profit for what it is we're talking about doing?
Yes.
There is?
Yeah. Yes, there is.
Can we see it?
I, I could get that information for you. I don't have it at this moment ready for you, but it, I mean, it's.
Okay.
It's market-based philosophy, Mr. Arn.
Well, yes, but I'm talking about a specific survey, not just, not just a concept. I'm talking about a specific study that, that proves to us that the money that's going to be spent and the lamb that's going to be tied up will actually turn a profit for the county. You'll get it to me.
Sure.
Okay.
Let's schedule a meeting, Mr. Arn.
Okay. Thank you.
Will that be available to everybody?
Sure. Let's schedule a meeting. I mean, I can present it. I mean, it's, there's 34 spots. You look, unfortunately, market rate, if we look across the state at different spots, $25 an evening is below market rate. And I agree that we should not be competing against private interests. However, if we look at Idaho and we start talking about the Republican Party platform in this discussion, last time I checked, the Idaho legislature is overwhelmingly Republican. There is not a single elected member, and by the way, it is election week, so there is no electioneering here. Early voting has started downstairs. These services that are provided to the citizens of Idaho is done so with a Republican governor and an overwhelmingly Republican legislature. So that's just the numbers, and it's been, there hasn't been a Democrat governor since Cecil Anderson. That's been a couple decades. So I'm pretty sure that our Republican legislature in our Republican state is supportive of campgrounds because we are.
Monica Gunner.
She's had her hand up for a minute.
Oh.
Teresa Heisner. Did I say that right? Unmute yourself. There you go.
You did. Can you hear me?
I can.
Good morning, everyone. I wasn't expecting you to take online now, but I'm ready.
Name for the record.
Teresa Heisner for the record. I wanted to reiterate what Brian had said about the sub-area committees as a member of the Priest River Old Town Sub-Area Committee. I would be very happy to volunteer my time to pick up where we did leave off. We were cut off pretty abruptly. Number two, I would like to, once again, thank y'all for allowing your constituents to voice their concerns. It's very important, unlike the last board. I know it can be rough, but that's public servant life now, isn't it? And thank you, Asia, for hosting the Spirit, the Spirit Valley informational meeting. It was very well-attended. And third, which I think is extremely important, as a Bonner County taxpayer, I strongly encourage that our sheriff's office receives a healthy budget increase to accommodate a traffic division and other law enforcement needs. We have a serious, and I mean a serious problem here in Bonner County. I'm also a team captain for Priest River for the Neighborhood Watch, and I don't like to bug the sheriff's office often unless I think it's important. But, but there's a problem. There's a serious traffic problem, and I really hope that you do not take this lightly. In my opinion, I believe the sheriff's office should be a top priority, and I sincerely mean that. So thank y'all. Have a good day and have a good rest of the week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Monica Gunner again. So Luke, you keep talking about saving the taxpayer dollars. That's your big thing about this campground. The campground, if it goes on the proposed site, can be torn down at any minute, and that grant will have to be repaid. You put this campground on current fairground, fairground property. The campground's there. It can be in the trees where the rental house is. It can be a beautiful, shady, nice campground, putting it where the, most of the fair board want it. So it's not saving taxpayers' money if we go ahead and put this in, and then, who knows, three, five, 10 years from now, it gets torn down because it doesn't matter. It's just pipe, it's just water, it's just electricity. That has come out of your mouth how many times? But that's not saving taxpayer money. What is saving taxpayer money is to put this on the fairgrounds where it should be, on the current fairgrounds property, build it for good, and it will always make money. Putting it where it can be torn down in whenever, and then us having to pay this grant back, which it will have to be paid back, I know that for a fact, that's not saving taxpayer money. So you can't use that excuse for saving taxpayer money. They still want the fairgrounds, just not in that spot, that's not on current fairgrounds property. So, and I wish you would have interviewed a lot more fairground applicants, fairboard applicants. There are some amazing people out there.
Thank you. Go.
Doug Patterson in the flesh for the record.
Welcome back.
Careful what you wish for. So first off, I wanted to say that one of the reasons why there aren't more private campgrounds is because the public of people cannot compete with the government when the government is being subsidized by taxpayer dollars having campgrounds all over the state. And I don't think too many people that are camping are going to be interesting in what they can see in the way of moons coming from the jail. So those things said, I would, again, this is going around and around, and it is, nobody can understand why it is that two of the board commissioners are unwilling to allow this development of this campground to be done on existing fairboard property. And it's, it is, that point has been made to you again and again. You have these votes to go back and do it your way again and again, and somehow that just does not make even a little sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Dimitri. How are you? Name for the record.
Good morning, Dimitri Borisov. I kind of have a different question. There's been videos circulating around on the internet about Sandpoint Mayor accusing citizens of this county being a Taliban. Have you guys, have you seen that video?
I watched it.
Okay, great. So I have a few thoughts on this one, and basically, comparing citizens of the county to the Taliban in Afghanistan is a serious accusation. It is important to note that making such a comparison is not only insensitive but also inaccurate, as the Taliban is a radical Islamist militant group that has been involved in numerous human rights abuses and terrorist activities. It is unfair and unjust to equate low-abiding citizens with the group that is responsible for violence and instability in Afghanistan. Would be great if the commissioners would call Mayor Shelby and tell him that he was wrong. Not only he accused citizens of Bonner County being a Taliban, he also said that the sheriff and, and the prosecutor and other elective officials are not abiding by Idaho law. They implying that those two people are supporting those kind of activities. So it'd be great for all commissioners to see a letter or something to Mayor Shelby, tell him that he was wrong. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Dimitri, I actually went over to the city of Sandpoint, and I actually asked that specific question as to what happened, and they did not support that particular interview. Mrs. Stapleton received the request from that group, and they didn't respond to it. That action was independent of the city by the mayor, and so that, because I asked if they were going to do like a canned statement to address it, and they're not because he deviated from his function as the mayor. And so I would recommend that people who saw that, who don't like what they saw, contact the mayor himself for that video, because the city did not support that video. I did, I did ask that question, though.
First Amendment allows him to make so asinine, because that's what I would call it, statements.
Which is fine, but.
And.
But you guys are high-spoken officials in the county, and it's people who like you to do the present.
With a great amount of certainty, I can say that me and Sheriff Wheeler are probably on the same page 100% when it comes to that comment he made, and along with everybody else in this room.
So Wayne Martin for the record again. Going with the fairground, the fair board, I was there, Jessica was there, there were others that were there. It, I know they were talking about the draft horse and being able to reserve spots, and it looks as a, a good possibility. A question that I have with the campground, the money for the rent. Now, I thought that goes back to the fairgrounds and not back into the county coffers to help them and all. Besides that one area and the existing area, have there been other areas that have been looked at? One of the areas that I, I was wondering about is along the fence line next to the playground area. That's a long stretch, and that would put the youth that are taking care of animals and all much closer to their animals to be able to take care of them, both in the morning and at night, when they put them to bed, being able to put them in. Not a lot of trees, but trees can be planted, they'll grow. And my understanding is that the new area is going to also include sewer. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. I know everything is cost. I don't know if it's been considered not putting in sewer, doing dry camping like the existing one is, that would end up, you know, lowering the overall cost on that, because we do have a dump station in front.
Part of the conditions of the. Part of the conditions of the grant, there's still a couple phases, but that is, and the engineers in, prior to this board taking office in January 9, so that would have been the board of Chairman Bradshaw, Commissioner, Mr. Conley, and Mr. McDonald, they did an extensive look at where they could do it within the confines of this budget, and going back to Rhonda, the fair manager, there had been discussions about that being located, that campground being located in that space.
Real quick question then on that. The sewer line, is that going to run backwards off the property versus going through the campground?
It's going to go to the west. So, that would be towards Schweitzer, towards that, where those apartments are. That's, and that's part of it. The infrastructure in that location, which I will address, it's budgetary.
George Gayer, from Becker. I would, I would like to affirm this gentleman's comment about Shelby. And I would just like to say, of all the people that could have run for governor from this county, we had Shelby and Commissioner Bradshaw certainly in this county. We can find much more qualified people to represent us. I think you two are two sides of the same coin. You just want to chop it up and sell it off. My question, Commissioner Williams, when it comes to votes, for example, people that want to serve in a volunteer capacity, I think there was a discussion, I can't remember exactly what it was, but again, you found yourself on the opposite ends of these two gentlemen, when it comes to campaign contributions. So, in the event that someone is recommended for a volunteer position, and if that person was contributing to someone's campaign, would the commissioner ethically be obligated to refuse himself?
So, the right process is that the commissioner should address that issue with our prosecutor's office to make sure that there isn't an issue, and there is the issue of, it gives the appearance of wrongdoing, so, and for the sake of that, to pulling back, similar to Spencer's education to the board last week. So, I think that that particular issue is still at the AG's office for receiving campaign donations, and they're going to actually give a response on that.
What is your position?
I would not want to be putting someone in a position that I received a monetary reward from. I would want to make sure that it looks as clean and as transparent as possible. And the reality is, is if they're the right person for the position, then the board will select them with or without, without me muddying the water of, you know, that person. I've done that even in cases where I know the person, but there's nothing other than I know the person, and I've said I don't want to be part of making the decision, because I don't want to give the appearance of favoring or not favoring somebody and stepped away from issues.
So, if it turns out that there was a campaign contribution and the commissioner voted for someone, what, is there any recourse for that?
The answer for the public on not liking what the commissioners do is that you are the supervisor. So, if you don't like what we're doing, you have to do your due diligence to get the right people in position, and if you feel that your position of disliking myself as a commissioner, then you need to get, you know, that significant number of people in the county that will sign your petition, and then also the people that will do the full recall. It's not, I don't agree that it's not possible to do it, it's just a lot of work and requires it to be organized. And unfortunately, that is the recourse, and it really shows, what people are expressing shows why local elections are so important.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Ms. Aron.
George, can I have these, please?
Jennifer Aron, Segal, for the record. And first of all, I want to say I have no dog in the fight about the fairgrounds issue. And as an extremely fiscally conservative person, I appreciate that you're concerned about saving the taxpayers' money. That area that we're talking about, you mentioned that it was costing millions of dollars for maintaining it. I'm guessing that's probably an exaggeration, but I know a bunch of goat farmers that would be happy to graze that, and I'm a darn good mower, I'd be happy to volunteer my services, if that's what it takes. If we're forcing this issue in that spot just to maintain it, I'd be happy to mow it for you.
You've got five minutes.
Christina Nicholas Anderson, for the record. We know that I'm a proponent and a fan of the fairgrounds, and so, I was so appreciative, as we know, that you got the fairboard members in place. As far as the fairground RB camp goes, I don't have, like this young lady says, I don't have a huge stake in it. I want what's best for the fairgrounds, however that shakes out. I would like to point out, I'm not on the fairboard. I don't have any authority over the fair, any more than Ms. Gunter does. I think we all just have a heart for the fair, and that motivates us in different ways. So, I don't have the right to speak on behalf of the fairboard any more than she does, and so I'm not sure where that's coming across. But I would like to say, I have information about putting the RB camp in the space where the house is. That house brings in about $1,400 a month income for the fairgrounds, and I got that from the budget sheets that I've requested. And so, I would hate to see us put in $25 campground spaces in a spot that the house is bringing in $1,400 a month right now, because that doesn't seem like that would be fiscally responsible. And I know that the shaded areas is where a lot of the campers, the 4-H campers camp and do their dry camping right now, and it would be a shame, in my perspective, to put campers out in the sun, the dry campers, when they have some shade currently available. Now, I know Ms. Gunter and other people who have camped at the fairgrounds for generations, and some of you have more knowledge on that than I do. So, I'm just sharing with you the information I've gathered through records, requests, and talking with 4-H campers. And just in terms of the dollars, $1,400 a month and the $25, you'll have to kind of do the math on that, but we have steady renters who are in year-long leases, multiple-year leases, and so that's one point of consideration to think about. Thank you for hearing.
Thank you.
Got three minutes, if somebody wants to sing a song, or...
Hurry up, Vince. Just out of curiosity, Spencer Hutchins, just out of curiosity, we're getting how much in a grant? How much is the grant we're getting?
Just under 50, I think.
No, are we referencing the fairgrounds?
Yeah.
It's, I want to say, $473,000, and then there's $25,000 that is, that the fairboard agreed to contribute.
The disclaimer is, it's not something we're getting, it's what the grant is for. We have to apply for an extension.
Okay. And this is just free money, it just like appeared out of nowhere?
I would argue it's not free money, because it's coming from the state, so therefore it came from citizens.
Taxpayers.
Yeah, it came from somewhere.
So, what's the, I mean, we're not going to pay it back, right? We just get a grant, we get it, it's free money to us, right?
That's not accurate.
No?
No. If you pull, so, like, three votes ago, I read this statute that said that if we undo this project, and we have committed to 20 to 25 years, that you have to repay all or part. And so, that was one of the things that I read in the statute when you look at parks and recreation.
So, are we going to bank, save all of the $25 a day fees until we have enough money, like in an emergency fund to pay it back in case it gets demoed? How much, how many $25 a day rentals do we have to do to, how many $25 a day rentals do we have to do before we're going to bank half a million dollars?
I think the other question is, how do you take the fair's money? Because the 25 goes to the fair, not the county.
Yeah. Just curious, I mean, because if it doesn't last as long, and we got to pay it back, and seems like a $25 a day per spot, that's a lot of rentals, and looks like the county might be on the hook for some money, and you won't be saving taxpayers' money at that point.
Thank you. Anybody want to talk for one minute? We can't close early, so we'll just buy off another 60 seconds, 50 seconds.
Let Luke go faster.
It is 9:59, and we'll call a five-minute recess for them that don't like to work under pressure.[1198.78]
With the Honorable Commissioner Williams.
So, just so I know that somebody's gonna say that's too many dates, so I wrote them all down with the events, but I'll read things out so you can grab it if you want that. All right, Old Town Update. Considerable thanks to our road and bridge. They love their sign, they feel heard and appreciated, so thank you for everybody that helped to coordinate that. I met with Clark Fork on the 26th.
Adopt the order of agenda real quick, yeah.
I would like to amend. Be aware. Are you all right with that, Commissioner Williams?
I don't know what you want to amend.
Mr. Chairman, I move to amend the Order of Agenda as presented and to strike under B O C C. Executive Session is the one that I put on there. We are not ready to do this, so it is, it's not the Human Resources one, it is not the Sheriff's, it would be the one in the middle, which was the Action Item Discussion Decision Regarding Records Exempt Technology Purchasing. We, we aren't ready for this and it would be, I'll put it back on the agenda next week, so I would move to amend the Order of Agenda, striking Executive Session, B O C C.
All right, I'll second the motion to amend.
Okay.
Commissioner Omet?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Brachor?
Yes. Now the Order of Agenda Motion.
All right, I move that we accept the Order of the Agenda as amended.
I'd second the motion.
Roll call vote.
Commissioner Omet?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Brachor?
Yes. Continue.
All right, Clark Fork Senior Center. They do a lot for their community, but they are in need of volunteers. They work with a small staff, so if anybody knows of anybody in that area that has time to donate to the Senior Center, that would be beneficial. They serve their community on Wednesdays and Fridays at 11:30, but they also deliver meals to homebound people Monday through Fridays. Spirit Valley Town Hall, thank you to everybody that have worked that event, from the elected officials to county employees, to the people that were in charge of different groups. The community came out of that event with a lot of helpful information from all of our elected officials, and I would actually encourage everybody to find who your PC is or your county commissioner and ask them to hold that type of an information session. We were welcoming Senator Hart, who we haven't heard speak postseason because it was his first term, as well as Phil, or excuse me, Hawkins, and then we got a lot of useful information from our county employees and found out how much we need to brush up on who is elected in our county because we all failed that test mostly. I do want to give a response. Some people asked me follow-up questions on elections after that event, so I might give some answers with all of them leading to please contact Mike Rosedale in the Clerk's Office. So, one of the questions was about 16-year-olds, which a lot of people didn't know, 16-year-olds can be poll workers, they just can't vote. And so, that might be a good way of pulling younger people into our system by education, education through the Elections Office, but also being able to be involved, then they might be excited to vote. So, definitely that was something new for a lot of people. The Clerk says that he makes sure to disseminate that information over the radio when he's given that opportunity. Another question that was asked was how does a person become a judge? And so, the answer is summarized, so it's not a quote, that it is a case-by-case basis. They typically look for those persons who've participated multiple times, who are more familiar with the system, to become judges. If you have any more specific questions, go ahead and ask. One of the things that I want to clarify is we always need poll workers, so it allows us to have the flexibility when we need people to go to different precincts, but also when we see people that might be making routine errors, but will need someone to replace them. So, I want to encourage everybody, if you have the time, even if they don't need a poll worker for the election that you're currently thinking, there's always another one coming up. After May, there's going to be one in November. And so, signing up to be a poll worker and going through that training before we get to that point is going to be helpful to the community. I did follow up with the Attorney General's Office regarding training. They are hoping to finish out their last few reports on Bonner County this week, and hopefully by the end of this week, they will be giving me a date when they can come out and do training to the community and employees on open meeting. So, a community member mentioned a concern regarding Sandpoint and its water system, water sewer. So, I went and had a meeting, and I'm gonna read it because I made sure that I didn't get anything wrong as I summarize what took place. So, the purpose of the meeting was to discuss the wastewater system of the City of Sandpoint. Concerns were brought forth during a county business meeting from members of the public. The concern was that the system within the City of Sandpoint is failing. The constituent wanted the county to be aware of the issue related to the system. So, I met with Jennifer Stapleton, who is the City of Sandpoint Administrator, and Greg Lanning, the City of Sandpoint Utility Director. The City of Sandpoint has reviewed their current system and determined that they require an upgrade to the system to address the increase in water that must be treated due to the fluctuations in snow and rainfall in addition to the increase in population. The City of Sandpoint has a need for a system that can tolerate eight million gallons per day. The City of Sandpoint has developed a plan which is available on their website for review, and so if you go on master plans, there's like five different types of master plans, and everything related to wastewater is there for you to review. The current estimated cost for the upgrade is $65 million. The city is actively managing each stage of funding to include banking options for this type of upgrade and rate adjustments. There is no risk that the City of Sandpoint will fail to appropriately address the issues regarding wastewater resulting in the county having to pay the bill. One of the current issues that is impacting funding is the fact that the current system has not failed due to interventions identified and implemented by the city. As such, other systems throughout the state of Idaho have received priority review, response, and funding. The City of Sandpoint does anticipate the need to bring the issue before the public within the next few years, however, each step is being managed by the city. The city does indicate a need to address the area of city impact with the county in the coming years. And after having this discussion with the city, one of the things that we walked away with was to have a collaborative meeting monthly with myself and the City of Sandpoint so we can make sure that we're addressing issues and concerns from both departments. And so, hopefully, and I am gonna ask, does that answer all of your concerns since you're the one who asked me, or do you have additional question?
No, if you're satisfied that the county residents are not gonna be stuck paying the bill, that satisfies my concern.
And they have, okay, and they have a lot of, we were able to go through their process of that particular system, and I don't think that there is any risk. One of the things that they discussed is there's a certain type of loan that you take where it kind of extends that repayment period. So, they're paying attention to their funding, and if you live in Sandpoint, you probably have seen a little bit of that rate hike already, and that's part of that adjustment of recognizing what they need.
I am concerned that they're not gonna do anything until it fails.
So, and the statement was concerned that they're not gonna do anything until it fails, and that's part of the problem, is that they actually are doing things to prevent it from failing, and so they're not rising to the sense of urgency. So, they have done a few interventions, and I am gonna go off script because I think I remember this one correctly. One of the things they did was, there was a period of time when you sold your home that you had to do an upgrade, but then they determined that that wasn't really beneficial, and then they stopped doing that process. So, I'll reserve the right to say, maybe I said it wrong, but I know Jennifer's watching, so I think I did that one right. So, but they are watching, and then I'll meet with them monthly, and that will be something that I'll be able to give you reports on is just the state of that particular system. So, there's a lot going on in the month of May and June, so I will not be in the county for the rest of this week. We have a graduation that we're going to. May 3rd, for my district, District 2, Westwater County levy is a big topic, so I want to make sure everybody knows of the events that the school is putting forward. May 3rd, there is a board meeting regarding the budget that is going to be at the District Office. For a lot of people that had questions at our town hall about, the state has now released what they're going to give to the school, but the levy was written before that, that might be a good setting to have that discussion with that particular board. On May 9th, the Board will have another meeting at the Blanchard Grange at 6:30. On May 11th, they'll have a meeting at the Le Cleed Community Center at 6:00 PM. Please vote on May 16th or go downstairs and do your early voting. May 20th is Blanchard Cemetery Cleanup Day. We need you guys, all of the people in our area, bring all your tools, we are giving away free pine needles and pine cones to all. That is our, that is our request, so bring your bag, too. May 23rd, IAC Spring Training in Courtland Lane. This is going to be the same day of our business meeting, so I will participate with our business meeting via Zoom, but the business meeting is going to have a hard stop because we have to make it down to that conference if you're in this particular building. But on the same day, on the 23rd, there's the Idaho State Tax Commission Town Hall, which is downstairs at 9:00 AM. If you're a member of the public, I would recommend that you attend that. There have been a lot of changes, and I know that our assessor has addressed that in some of the ways he's sending that letter out, but that would be a really good opportunity to attend the town hall with the Idaho Tax Commission. On June 15th, at the Rotary Center, we will be doing the Old Town Follow-Up post our meeting. That is gonna be at 4:00 PM. And then, June 20th, please pay your taxes. If you have a problem paying your taxes, please see Clarissa. And as we know now, that interest started accruing in January, so we want to make sure if you have an issue that you reach out to Clarissa, she can help you understand that process. One of the other things to note is solid waste. Board of County Commissioners is calling for letters of interest from persons interested in serving on the Bonner County Solid Waste Advisory Committee. There's two positions, one from District 1, that Segal area, and one from District 3, the Sandpoint area. These applications are due by May 5th. So, as we look to our next agenda, I don't know how much we'll be able to get out because it is a tight agenda, but I, I want to put on the agenda a process by which we select people for these committees so that we can have consistency throughout selection on committees. So, that is all I have for you on this update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There is just a lot of stuff going on in Bonner County right now. I want to start by acknowledging the work that was done by the two IT teams to do some migration to improve our infrastructure. It is nice to see them working together so that we can improve processes for the county, you'll notice, hopefully. We are working to have better transparency for meetings, so if you go to the Bonner County homepage, you can see there is a scroll-down menu. Our website is clunky. We are working on that. We acknowledge it. It's, everything takes time and money, and in government, we are not a sports car. So, we are working on that, and in regards to Sherri's question, my, my hope is that on that homepage, that there would be an attached agenda for the stuff minus the, there are some confidential purchases, so that for public safety or technology or whatever. I would like us to get there, we are moving there, but like I said, we're, we're more of an 18-wheeler rather than a Corvette. So, BCAT met last week, and BCAT is the Bonner area, Bonner County Area Transportation. And there is a lot of projects going on within Bonner County, which is exciting, and Bonner County is eligible to potentially get another, it's not a free bridge because it comes from the taxpayer, but because of the surplus, there is a possibility that Bonner County will get another bridge upgraded. I'm looking at Matt, I think we have three right now, and potentially, and some of this is gonna be coming forward, that we could be getting up to five bridges being replaced. Bonner County has a lot of bridges, and there is nothing cheap about a bridge, but all of us who drive across them need them to operate in that manner. The Independent Highway District is working on doing a bridge on Schweitzer. I mean, there's, there is, the amount of work that's going on to improve roads is incredible. With that being said, the amount of additional traffic on our roads that are making them fall apart is also incredible. There is going to be a construction team meeting that has not held, been held for the last three years for BCAT, where the different entities are going to work together to work with utilities such as Northern Lights and Avista so that they can plot and plan out how to most effectively work on these road projects specifically. And on Friday, I was able to be a, I volunteered and received Elections Training that was put on by our Elections Department, and I would echo Commissioner Williams' words, we need volunteers. It's an impressive process, which I'm not going to muddle because I was asked not to muddle it, but there are a lot of safeguards from the beginning, and it, it's a neat process as an ex-government teacher to get to look at how regimented and controlled our process is. It's, it's just cool, so I would advocate that people do so. I will be attending the Business Meeting on the 16th, after I help set up, and then I will be returning, and I will be doing what I'm told. I am not a judge, I am a peon, and I'm looking forward to just participating in our election that way. I voted yesterday, and what I did notice is that shrinkflation has occurred because my "I Voted" sticker last year was about two inches by two inches, and this year it's about three quarters of an inch by three quarters of an inch. So, that is hitting us as well. Now, in regards to the fairgrounds, I received a response, and this is from Tiffany Brunson. In response to your voicemail and text on Friday, April 21st, Bonner County has not yet submitted an extension request for RV 23-1-09-1, Bonner County Fairgrounds Campground Expansion. When an extension request is submitted, Bonner County will have to provide justification as to why there has been a delay in starting the project, and assurances the project can be completed within the budget as scoped in the original application. A fair and open bidding process should give the applicant the information necessary to determine if the project can be completed on time and within the budgeted amount. Given the current construction climate, many projects have been unable to proceed due to rising costs. In those cases, the project either needs to be withdrawn, or the applicant will have to provide the project overrun. So, I met with Jeff Jensen, and I also worked with, oops, I also worked with Spencer Ferguson, who was our in-house engineer. After attending one of the fairground meetings, I asked the fairground how many vehicles and how much parking is needed on the existing site. And so, here, and I messed this up in the meeting, so worst-case data, 22, 2022 radio visit equals 2,400 plus 100 vendors, 2,500 humans. So, based on that, with persons per car, if it's two persons per car, you would need approximately 1,300 spaces. If there are three persons per car, you would need approximately 900 spaces. And so, then, this lays out the amount of spaces that there are. There would be a deficit of spaces. The current campground, the current fairgrounds, and this is assuming that everybody parks perfectly, which you've, if you've ever been to the fairgrounds, not everybody parks perfectly. There are some of us that were not destined to back up short horse trailers. I am a person who was meant to drive a trailer forward, and there are other people that have similar circumstances and skills. Now, I also spoke with Jeff Jensen, and I asked him in regards to create a mock-up. This is a mock-up, this is not a will, there is no shall, this is a if. I believe in a win-win, which is why I brought this forward. Our current Bonner County Courthouse is approximately 45,000 square feet. This is a mock-up, a potential, this is, this is, there's been no money spent yet. This footprint could be a future justice center with a ground floor footprint of 50,000 feet with 200 parking spots. The campground exists, win-win, and there is still acreage that is left over. Now, speaking with Mr. Jensen, and in regards to the timelines associated with the grant application for IDPR, there is not time within this cycle to meet the requirements of the Idaho Parks and Recreation Grant if we were to re-engineer that grant. So, in order for us to even have an option, and it can still be a no, people, but in order for us to even have any possibility of receiving the $473,000, this project had to move forward. I did speak with the clerk, I attended the Fair Board Workshop very briefly yesterday, and it was great to see a full board laid out doing the business of the fair, and then I left. So, I don't know how it ended up, but I will be there on Monday. I have worked with the clerk so that we can get some dates because that meeting still is going to take place. But in regards to whether or not, if the grant was dismissed prior to the meeting, well, we wouldn't have even had to have the meeting. So, we will have the meeting, the Board of Commissioners will speak on it, the Fair Board will speak on it. I don't know how that's gonna go, but I will be there on Monday, May 8th, and I will look to see which direction we go. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the Order of Agenda.
That has been done. Mr. Chairman, how about the Consent Agenda?
Or the Consent Agenda.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
I second the motion.
Roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, Mr. Rosedale.
Good morning, Commissioners, morning, everybody. For you, I have fiscal year '23 Claims Batch Number 15, an amount of $399,992.62, Demand Batch Number 15, an amount of $267,270.46, totaling $667,263.8 for your approval.
Usually, you say something before I say the motion. Are you good?
No. Go ahead.
All right, I move to approve payment of FY '23 Claims and Demands in Batch Number 15 totaling $667,263.8.
I second the motion.
Roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Any public comment, want to add or?
Where did Doug go? I mean, he finally came and he's now.
That's why I paused it, threw me off.
Number two.
Okay, I have EMS Claims Batch Number 15, an amount of $3,932.54 for your approval.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve payment of the fiscal year '23 Claims and Demands in Batch 2, Claims Batch Number 15 totaling $3,932.54.
I second the motion.
Public comment? Just wanted to like the little ones. Roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you very much. All right, prosecutor, Mr. Wilson.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bill Wilson for the record. For you today is a proposed resolution, which, if adopted, would authorize the clerk to open the budget in response to the receipt of some unscheduled revenue donations that were received for our vast Lilybrook program. It's $1,000, and this is something we do typically quarterly, but it's not no true real schedule, just whenever we receive donations that are directed to Lilybrook, then we need to come, route those through the Auditor's Office and make sure that they're part of the budget before we can spend them, and that's what is before you today.
Based on the information before us, I move for the Board to approve. Based on the information before us, I move for the board to approve resolution number 2332 authorizing the receipt of unanticipated revenue in the total amount of $1,000 for use by the vast program in furtherance of its mission to support victims of violence in Bonner County.
I second the motion.
Roll call vote?
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Emergency management.
Mark Masters, Bob Howard, Director of Emergency Management for the record. This amendment number 01 is reimbursable general services agreement between Bonner County and Avista. Financial support in the amount of $125,000 for the bonfire program to conduct fuel reduction treatments as described in the statement of work for calendar year 2023. Avista agrees to reimburse the county for allowable expenditures for hazardous fuel treatments on private lands and associated administrative costs.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move that the county approve the reimbursable general service agreement amendment number one with the Vista for the contract number R-44001 and allow the chairman to sign.
I second the motion.
Roll call vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Justice Services, Ron.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ron Spols, Director of Justice Services for the record. Just have one item this morning, and just to give some background on this, the previous board approved the first phase of this memorandum. Basically, what it is is to upgrade the touchscreen and intercom system and the software that runs all of that equipment. And so we are almost to the conclusion of phase one, and has actually started on phase two because he had to incorporate part of that into phase two to all work properly. But this is to approve the funds for phase two of that process. So basically, recommend the board approve the cost for phase two of the replacement of touchscreen and intercom systems of Justice Services as set forth in the attached proposal from PNW Integration LLC in the amount of $61,323. Payment for phase two, the replacement will be made from probation services budget account number 3475. I won't go read through all of those because I know you'll have to repeat them anyway. And then the balance of that would be paid out of carryover, tobacco tax carryover. And so the good thing about this, both phase one and phase two, was paid 100% either by money, unanticipated revenue that we had brought in from our contracts with other counties or by the great smokers of the state of Idaho or tobacco users. None of this actually directly came, unless you're a tobacco user, directly came from the taxpayers. It was all paid up on our county anyway, paid by other taxpayers. So anyway.
All right, I move to approve the cost of phase two for replacement of touchscreen and intercom system at the Justice Service Center in the amount of $61,323 as set forth above.
I second the motion. I second the motion.
Roll call vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. HR, homeroom. That's what it meant, school, wasn't it? Homeroom.
Good morning, Commissioners. Cindy Baker for the record. We have two positions for a request to recruit. The first one is for the Treasurer's Office, and the position was formerly an account clerk too, and they've revised and upgraded that position to allow for a different work processing, which will be importing business processes. And it's replacing a vacated position, and the new position will be titled receivable specialist. The second one is a position revision for our DMV manager to DMV director, and that is an upgraded position with a title change. That's it.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve commencing with approval of the recreation of the positions, receivable specialist, Treasurer's Office, and DMV director effective May 2nd, 2023.
I second the motion.
Roll call vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Sheriff.
Sheriff Joe Wheeler for the record. Number, first item is, Bonner County, Bonner General Health is entering into an agreement with Bonner County Detention Center to ensure mutual support for compliance with the federal mandates of the Prison Rape Elimination Act, PRIA. The Bonner County Detention Center will provide inmates with timely, unimpeded access to emergency medical treatment and crisis intervention services through BGH. Either party may cancel this contract with 30 days written notice. The term of the contract is for two years from the date of the last signed of MOU, and this is just a renewal of the last contract.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve the memorandum of understanding between Bonner County Detention Center and Bonner General Health to comply with the federal mandates of PRIA. The agreement will be effective from the date of the last signature on the MOU unless terminated earlier upon 30 days' notice from either party. This has been reviewed by legal already.
I second the motion.
Okay, public comment? All right, roll call vote?
Yes.
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 Commissioners, the second item I have is a similar contract. The victim witness coordinator, VWC, of Bonner County Prosecutor's Office, is entering into an agreement with Bonner County Detention Center to ensure mutual support for compliance with federal mandates of the Prison Rape Elimination Act, PRIA. The Bonner County Detention Center will provide inmates who are victims of sexual assault while incarcerated with access to Victims Advocate or emotional support through the VWC. Either party may cancel the contract within 30 days' written notice. The term of the contract is two years from the date of the last signature of the MOU.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve the memorandum of understanding between Bonner County Detention Center and the victim witness coordinator to comply with the federal mandate of PRIA. The agreement will be effective from date of the last signature on the MOU unless terminated earlier upon 30 days' notice from either party.
I second the motion.
Roll call vote?
Yes.
It has been approved by legal, and yes.
Yes. All right, thanks, Sheriff. Road and Bridge, Matt.
Good morning. Matt Mulder, Staff Engineer for the Road and Bridge Department. Both of my items today are pertaining to bridges, and since Commissioner Ahmet in his district committee talked about bridges, let me just expand on that a little bit to give you an overall picture of where we're at with bridges in the county. We currently have 39 bridges that the county maintains in the 700 miles of road that we are in charge of. Of those, 10 are rated in poor condition based on the state's inspection reports. Of those 10, two have been awarded grants in the federal aid bridge program for replacement. Those are our two worst-ranked bridges, one being the Rapid Lightning Bridge number five over Rapid Lightning Creek, and the other being the East River Loop Bridge over the north fork of the East River, and that's a single-lane steel truss bridge. And both of those bridges are what are on my agenda today. The other five bridges that are currently in the grant program are the state of Idaho's leading Idaho local bridges. Governor has been pushing a lot of money into bridge replacement programs. There's 400-something bridges in the state of Idaho that are rated in poor condition, and so we were able to submit for replacement of up to five of those for our jurisdiction based on the 10 that we have that are in poor condition. So those five have been ranked and sorted along with the other 400, and two of those have already been selected for replacement and are in works for design, and, well, one's replacement, one is a repair. That work's being done currently, and construction of those is moving forward rapidly because it's just state funding and not the federal money. The third bridge that Commissioner Ahmet alluded to is going to probably be in the fourth round of funding that rolls out in the leading Idaho local bridge program, so we're expecting that that will probably be announced next year. Potentially, all five of those could be replaced or repaired if the state continues getting this surplus and dumping that money into bridges. So there you go. There's the greater overview. Agenda number one today is a contract for design of the East River Loop Bridge. This is one of the bridges that's in the federal aid bridge replacement program, and we have selected Keller &amp; Associates to do that, the design for this bridge. And before us today is a negotiated scope of work and attached professional services agreement for a not-to-exceed amount of $709,085 for the design of that bridge. Total cost of the bridge, design and construction, is estimated to be $2367,000. And of that, Bonner County would normally pay a match of 7.34% as part of the federal aid program, but because of all of the extra money that the federal government has been pushing into infrastructure lately, a lot of that has gone into this bridge program, and so we are on the hook for $0, 0% match for designing and construction of this bridge. Even though we have this very large professional services agreement in front of us, and we will be paying those bills upfront, we will be reimbursed 100% right away. With that, I turn it over to the board.
This also has been reviewed by standard agreement with legal. I move to approve this typical ITD professional services agreement with LTAC and Keller Associates, Inc. for preliminary design of the East River Loop Bridge and to allow the board to sign the agreement.
I second the motion.
Roll call vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Did anybody have any public comment on the bridges, want to build on? All right, next one.
Item number two, this is for the other bridge, which is in the federal aid grant program. That's the Rapid Lightning Bridge number five. We have, we're pretty much near completion of design of this bridge, and we are working on acquiring the right-of-way that we need to purchase on all four corners so that we can build a new bridge without completely eliminating the first one and sending people on a 13-something mile D2R. We have purchased parcels number two, three, and four already, and this is pertaining to parcel number one. Unfortunately, one of the landowners passed away in the middle of this process, and so we cannot purchase this parcel number one until that parcel goes through probate. And in lieu of that, we have prepared this possession agreement, which will allow us to use the parcel and move forward with design and bid and construction as the parcel moves through probate. So for us today is a possession agreement with the remaining property owner and a payment of $500 in exchange for them signing this agreement. The board's consideration.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve this possession agreement for the Rapid Lightning Bridge number five, project parcel number one, and a payment of $500 to the property owner.
I second the motion.
Okay, public comment?
There's someone online.
Okay, Teresa Heisner.
Good morning again. Real briefly, back on the East River Bridge, is it on East River Loop Road or on East River Road?
East River Loop Road.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Roll call vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Williams, BLCC.
All right, so we have action items to review: Grievance Procedure Policy 900, Rules of Employee Conduct Policy 400, Discriminatory Workplace Harassment Policy, and Complaint Procedures 1001, Employee Discipline Policy, and the Whistle of Law Policy 2525. These policies were written by an employment attorney. They were approved by our legal team to move forward, Bill Wilson. There was a statement made by this board that said they also wanted Lewis Marshall to weigh in. Lewis Marshall has weighed in with the same answer of, "We determined that there was a need to have an employment attorney draft these policies. Therefore, these policies should be implemented. There is no issue and concern that is outstanding from the side of legal. It is the recommendation that we upgrade these policies that are antiquated." So I did receive a response from a commissioner saying that there was no interest in approving these policies, and this needs to be discussed because the prior answer was it required Lewis Marshall to say to approve it. It has been approved, and now it's, there's a statement saying you just don't want to approve. So we need to review this. Policies are intended to not just function for the business, it helps the employees. Employees need to know what their right of recovery is, they need to know process and procedure, and so it's my recommendation that we remove these policies that have been suspended indefinitely and move forward with the consult-your-attorney recommendation and approve these policies. So I move to approve the policies and make them effective today, May 2nd, 2023, as recommended by legal counsel.
There is not a second for myself, Mr. Chairman. This is the fourth time that these policies have been brought forward. My concerns remain. I have asked, and there was a vote, we voted these policies down, I believe it was last week or two weeks ago, and previous to that, there was additional concerns. In regards to seconding a motion, I'm looking, I'm reading out of Robert's Rules of Order Newly Revised in Brief. When one member has made a main motion, it must be seconded in order to be considered by the group. This shows that at least two members want the proposal considered. It does not necessarily mean the seconder agrees with the motion. If there is no second, the motion is not put before the group for discussion or decision. I stand by my responses. I am waiting to speak with Prosecutor Marshall. My concerns have not been addressed. My concerns remain.
So you haven't explained what the concerns are, and Lewis Marshall was who you responded to saying you have no interest because the board has voted. So if the board isn't going to update its human resources policy, then this board owes it to the employees of Bonner County to say, "What is your process and procedure?" What happened was an indefinite suspension of policies with no explanation as to why, with a continued statement of, "I have issues." At least, let's air those issues, and I'll restate if you aired the issues. It might be something where I would say, "You know what? That's reasonable. I would like to have that answer too." But you're simply saying you need Lewis Marshall or you need Bill Wilson, and they're both saying the same thing. The attorney that wrote the policies is an educated, well in employment law. They cannot give you any response on someone else's work when they told you it was necessary to consult with the employment law attorney. So if you're not going to move forward with these policies, what is the reason? Not just, "I need to talk to someone else," because from where I sit, it's you need to talk to someone that will tell you not to push it forward, because you have three legal opinions right now to move these policies forward. So can you at least tell myself and the community what's the issue with grievance procedure policy update that you need addressed so that I could work on that, because I'd like to stop bringing it up?
Okay, at this moment, there is no second, so the issue dies. Item two.
Really?
Really. So, item two.
All right, action, discussion, decision regarding fair board RV campground. So on, during a special meeting, this board brought what they called a memorandum of understanding. And so I'll point out memorandum of understanding requires understanding between two, not just me telling you what you're going to do. And so the document, and I'll read it because I'm not sure if everybody has seen it, it, one of the documents written by Commissioner Ahmet states that "The firm of James Asul and Associates has already been retained to assist Bonner County with the construction and permitting of a campground near the Bonner County Fairgrounds." That sentence is questionable for me because it says "near" and that it's already been retained, and I do know that members of the community have asked for the contract, and that has not been identified. I also requested a copy of that contract, and I haven't seen that contract. I also requested a copy of that contract, and I haven't seen that contract. It continues to say, "Due to previously unforeseen circumstances, Bonner County requires additional work on the site, specifically the planting of the entire fairgrounds property itself." So I'll pause there. That again is a statement that is not accurate. We went through this on the second, third, and fourth reading, that we did not need to plant existing fairground land. That came from the City of Standpoint and the Director of Planning. The statement continued to say that this work is required before the county can execute a boundary line adjustment, expanding the fairgrounds property to encapsulate the situs of the campground, which currently straddles a boundary line between the fairgrounds and a vacant parcel to the south. So the motion that was that they engage Sewell Engineering to the cost of $25,000. So I, in this particular meeting, I said, I had a lot of questions about why we were doing the meeting in that way, but one of the questions was, "Why are we engaging for something that the fair board has not agreed that they want? It isn't just a mere grant. Here's almost $500,000. The fairground has to move forward, and in this particular case, you're seeing commitment by this board to spend $25,000." I asked members of the board who in fact is going to pay the $25,000 if and when the county doesn't actually receive an extension for the grant, which they have said repeatedly, or which Commissioner Bradshaw stated that this county would just pay. The second item that was discussed was another memorandum of understanding, which I'll also state, was not reviewed by council, nor was it reviewed with the fairgrounds, nor did the fairgrounds sign it. What took place was Commissioner Ahmet called a single fairgrounds employee the night before the meeting to say, "By the way, come tomorrow." So if you guys recall, historically, there is a memorandum of understanding between the fairground and the county that says that that particular strip of land is allowed to be used by the fairgrounds for parking. So the memo that Commissioner Ahmet wrote is, "As part of Bonner County-owned real property adjacent to the fairgrounds is presently available for use by the Bonner County Fair Board as a parking lot. This area was previously used by the Bonner County Fair Board as a parking lot. The Bonner County Commissioner's intention is that this parcel be made available exclusively for use by the Bonner County Fairgrounds as a campground." And so there's a note with the reference of that particular piece of property. So I argued the issue of not only was this not reviewed, but now the fairground can't even park there because of a memo that I'll also argue is not a valid memo. So that was also passed. Both of them were passed with a two to one. I questioned the legality of just writing a document. We can't just call it a memorandum of understanding. And so for that, I am going to ask Scott Bauer, who has been working with the fair board on their legal issues, to respond to whether or not the document that is being referred to as a memorandum of understanding is actually a legal document between the county and the fair board. Do you have the ability to give a response? Can you come to the microphone?
Quick question for you, Scott, because I don't want you getting into ethics problems.
Sure.
You're currently suing Bonner County Commissioners and the BLCC office.
May I give you a little background that's relevant to this?
Well, I'm pretty relevant to the background of the lawsuit.
Yes, I'm glad you are.
So technically, we have legal representation, and any comment directly to us should probably go through that, or unless there's some type of ethics thing that would get you in trouble. I don't want you to get in trouble.
So let me, let me answer for you.
There's a question for him.
Well, and I'm going to answer because I'm the one who brought this up. So the board has created a problem because of a statement made by Commissioner Ahmet to Bill Wilson, who was the attorney working with the fair board. And so an allegation of a conflict of interest was logged, by which the prosecutor's office said, "Fine." Due to the statement made and the way in which communication comes from this board, they reviewed it, they addressed it with the board, and they decided that they were going to switch. And so in the capacity that he is in, he can represent the sheriff, he can represent the fair board, because, and if we don't like that as a board, then the hindsight is, Mr. Ahmet shouldn't have sent that email. Please answer my question.
I just don't want you to get in trouble.
No, I appreciate it, and I can elaborate on this a little.
No, I would just like to answer this one. We've already, we've already established your issue.
Yes, thank you for the concern, but it has been addressed. So in terms of the MOU document that was approved last Thursday, it, it states memorandum of understanding. It obviously doesn't have a counterparty. It does have the commissioner's signature and an attestation, but it's, so it's not, it doesn't function as a memorandum, your typical memorandum of understanding, which is usually between two separate parties. So I would say that what it would be constructively interpreted as is basically a statement of intention by the, by the board of county commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And so when we look at this on top of the fact that we haven't requested it, one of the things that we also have to address is the consistent statement that we need to ask the fair board for their opinion, yet we are not actually bringing the fair board to the table. And so Jody Russell, who is the vice chair, sent all members of the board of commissioners, as well as the attorneys and all of the board members. And I'll read her email to everybody. It said, "First, thank you for appointing people to the fair board. We need to be operating under a full board, and it was nice to meet yesterday with everyone present. Second, I would like to ask that if there is a meeting involving the fair board, that you please give adequate time and information for a meeting. Calling one board member the night before a meeting and leaving a message on a phone does not mean the board was informed or invited. If a phone call is going to be made, all members should be called and informed. All members work as volunteers on this board, and we have full-time day jobs of some kind. Expecting us to attend the meeting at the last hour is not giving us time to request time off or make sure our positions are covered. Please notice, notify us ahead of time. We would greatly appreciate it." And so this board has acted significantly without including the fair board. And the fair board is the one that would have to manage the actual grant. And so even if this entire board wanted this RV campground to go on this piece of land, at the end of the day, it's the fair board that is in control of that, and they're in control of the land. I presented, I think, three decisions ago, the statute that says we would have to repay if we tear that campground down. And so if we truly have a desire to have it, the campground, it is only reasonable that it go on existing fairground land. During this hearing or meeting on the 27th, there was confusion as to what was voted on. The vote was to allow the fairground to place the campground on existing fairground land. It was not to allow the opportunity. It was, that's what they were going to move forward and do, and that's what was communicated. This decision is costly to the county. There has been no study that says that even this amount of $25,000, we're just having Sewell Engineering continually consult with this board, but not consulting with the fair board. So it is my request that we, and we, we actually undo these two documents, which I think have significant legal errors in them. And I'll let, if Scott wants to say something, so I'll let him answer this.
Hi, Commissioner Williams. Yeah, if I can just elaborate on the, from the fair board's legal position, I'm the legal advisor of the fair board. And our, the fair board's legal position is that statutorily, the fair board has to be involved in the planning. It would be a violation of Idaho law to move forward with the citing of this project without the fair board approving a plan and filing it with the county commissioners. So it's the legal, our legal position that proceeding in this manner without the key stakeholder, statutory stakeholder, which is the fair board, is a violation of Idaho law. It's Idaho Code 22-204. And when you look at the memorandum of April 27th, it made it very clear that the Bonner County Commissioner's intention is that this parcel be made available exclusively for use by the Bonner County Fairgrounds as a campground. What that is, is the board of county commissioners doing the planning for the fair board. The Idaho code says the fair board must do. That is an encroachment. It's, it's a, it's ultra V race. It's a usurpation of the fair board's power. That is my legal position. I have not heard of any contrary legal positions taken by the other attorneys at the PA's office who represent the board of county commissioners. It's my understanding that they haven't even reviewed this. There is a dispute resolution clause in the MOU that does call, call for binding arbitration for disputes that may be recommended by the fair board. That is expensive. All that the commission needs to do is meet with the fair board, get the fair board's plan. What is the fair board's plan for that parcel? It's a legal requirement. You will not get a legal opinion to the contrary. You're proceeding in violation of law in the fair board's opinion. That's all I have to say.
So it also is worth noting that not only these documents were not even sent to our legal, but there was no conversation for input. I did reach out to Lewis to see if the prosecutor's office was part of this discussion, and they were not. So I will make a motion to take, oh, did you want to say something, Sheriff?
If I could.
Sure.
Yeah, you've already made a motion, haven't you?
No, I have not.
No, there has been no motion, but we aren't in discussion either.
Actually, as a commissioner, I can call on anybody to speak, so I'll say, "I call on the sheriff."
Wonderful.
Speak your piece.
Thank you, Commissioner. Sheriff Darrell Wheeler for the record. I guess I have a couple of questions. When Commissioner Ahmet showed his, his drawings that Sewell Engineering presented to him, I guess I have some questions. Was, was there any compaction test on the property there to justify a four-story building? It could be built there at 50,000 square feet?
It's a mockup. It's only a mockup.
Then another question. Were the sheriff, the prosecutor, the clerk, and the judges consulted in any drawings that were presented prior to that meeting? Or were they consulted on your intention of giving that acreage that's on the sheriff's original 20, 20-acre parcel over to the fair board?
Well, all property remains under the control of Bonner.
That's not my question. I know that.
And I'm answering the question as I choose, Sheriff.
Yes.
And all Bonner County property, according to state statute, is under the control of the board of county commissioners.
So the question is, none of those elected officials were consulted for future growth? Is that your answer? No?
They were not consulted in regards to creating a mockup.
So my question is, have you reviewed the history since 1997, when the jail was built, and the progression of developing the property? Have you reviewed, have you spoken to past commissioners?
Yes, I have.
On, on the, the plans for building a new dispatch center? Plans for expanding a justice center with a courthouse, a building for prosecuting attorney and the defense? Have you discussed with the sheriff on the request that has continually been made for expanding and building a new evidence facility? For parking facilities for the vehicles and equipment that the sheriff's had? For the expansion of any other buildings on the site? Or have you looked at or listened to the jail workshop in 2019, when Commissioner Bradshaw was there and the other two commissioners, when we discussed the, the shape of, of the jail, the expandability of the jail, the, the report from the engineering company who said $11 million would not even touch and meet the needs of the, the current jail because of the design of that? And there are just several other issues and discussions that should be done. Have you done that?
Sheriff, you and I met prior to taking office, and as I recall, in our multi-hour conversation, we covered all of those.
No, we didn't.
That's not my recollection.
My question was, prior to making that motion and that action last Thursday, were any of those things discussed or considered?
Sheriff, you and I had that conversation.
Well, it's, I recall it a little different.
After what?
I, I just think in the, in the, the idea that we as elected officials who are independent and autonomous with the, the duties and responsibilities we have, should be consulted with the commissioners. I know that you three have the authority, the budget authority, but I really think it would be helpful to, for all of us to be able to discuss the future growth and the need for that property. And once that two and a half acres is gone, it's going to be gone, that you passed a motion to give to the, the fair board. So I just, there's just a lot of questions that haven't been answered, and I think I've said in, in prior meetings, that before the county can actually proceed forward with any kind of building plans, there needs to be a survey done with all of those interested parties, with the court system, with the prosecutor, with the defense, with, with people that are involved in business, where they anticipate the growth of the county as we look forward for 20 or 30 years. And all of those should be considerations before we, we make just a, a quick response to, to give away two and a half acres part of that property that has always been discussed since I've lived here in the 25 years, for potential growth for a justice center. So I would just ask those considerations be made as we go forward, that there be an inclusion of all the other elected officials before something so drastic and quickly is made in some quick meeting that was agendized 24 hours before the meeting. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner.
Is there anybody in the room that has any history of conversation with the state regarding whether or not we'd have to repay the loan if we bulldoze it? Monica Gunter, I'll call on you. I, I get you don't like it, but this is my way of circumventing the not getting a second on the motion so that her comment is on the record.
Well, actually, Commissioner Williams, we have a chairman who...
Monica, I, this is, but in this process, I get to do this part. Monica Gunter.
Always eager to hear from Monica. Go ahead.
Your question is whether we would have to repay the grant?
Yes, and specifically, who did you speak with?
I spoke with the head of the Parks and Rec in Boise. My husband works for Parks and Rec in Boise, doing these grants and approving these grants, recommendations for these grants, and also Tiffany in Coeur d'Alene. When this, when Dan McDonald applied for this and put the fairgrounds name on it, the fairgrounds, this grant is not in the fairgrounds name. So the fairgrounds originally wanted, the fair, the fair board, the fair board, originally, they went to, to apply for an expansion of the existing campground. That's what they were asking for. Dan McDonald came in and said, "Let's put, let's do this over across the way on the sheriff's property," and we, because there's no room to expand the fairgrounds, which there is room to expand the fairgrounds. Dan McDonald needed to stay out of it because this is not what the fair board wanted. There's no fair board signatures on this grant application. This grant application was done by Dan McDonald. So I talked to Tiffany and, who's in Coeur d'Alene with Parks and Rec, and the Boise Parks and Rec head that Pat works, my husband works under.
Kathy Muir.
Kathy Muir. They both said that if this grant was torn down, whether it be, I mean, this campground was torn down, whether it be two years, five years, 15 years, it didn't matter. Bonner County taxpayers, not the fairgrounds, because the fairgrounds isn't even on this. And I don't know why the fairgrounds has to be putting their $25,000 up, because it's not in fairgrounds name. It was done by Dan McDonald. They both said that if this is not held with 20 to 25 years as a campground, Bonner County taxpayers would be required to pay the grant back. Maybe not all of it, depending on how long they kept it, but certainly a huge chunk of money. And then we'd have no campground, and we wouldn't, you'd have to pay the grant back. So put it on fairgrounds property.
All right. Scott Bauer?
I just want to add one more thing to follow up. A key counterparty on that grant application would be the fair board. The fair board had the statutory authority and the duty to conduct the planning for that site and the planning for that use. They're not on, they're not a signer on the grant agreement, and they should have been. There's a question as whether the commissioners by themselves legally have the capacity to enter into that contract. This contract may be ultra V race already or unlawful between IDPR. We could communicate, the fair board could communicate to IDPR that there was insufficient authority in the signatures with the original grant. That would put the whole thing in jeopardy. Unfortunately, it's getting to the point where everything is being put on the public record because we can't resolve these disputes with joint planning. It's really disappointing that we're, we're putting these kind of concerns and the lack of legal authority of the board to unilaterally plan for all property use in the county. The board of county commissioners does not have the legal power to plan the uses for the fair board. The fair, by statute, has that authority to do that planning, not the board of county commissioners. This is a usurpation of power. It's illegal.
Thank you. At this time, I'll call for a motion.
Jerry?
Yes.
Excuse me.
Excuse me. Chairman has called for a motion.
Well, there isn't a motion, but during the time that.
Well, if there isn't a motion, then we're done.
During the time that a commissioner is discussing something they put on, it clearly states that I can call on members of the audience to provide comments germane to the topic. So there is no motion, but I would like Sherry, if she has something to say, to say it. Well.
I do have a question. What phase are we in on this project? Have we accomplished anything on this project yet?
Yes.
Yes.
This is the second phase.
What was the first phase?
The first phase was repaving the area to the north and making improvements over there. That was phase one. This has been a five-year project.
Are you sure it was on your map?
I'm not sure if I have that one, but I'll look. We're going to have to use our imaginations. The first phase was improving this pavement over here.
That's for an RV campground?
That is where the existing sites are. Existing 30 plus.
So we repaved what we have already.
Yep.
And now we want to go and move all of that over somewhere else.
No, it's in addition. It's in addition. It's more revenue without raising taxes.
Did the taxpayers pay for this whole presentation?
Yes.
What do you mean, pay for the whole presentation?
Well, you have all these mock-ups.
Yes, they paid for my salary.
It's just your salary. I mean, did you hire someone to do this or anything?
Actually, those came from the the prints came from downstairs. So yes, the taxpayer paid for the ink and the paper. And the foam board, I did drive out and purchase the foam board. I actually used tape from my house as I was taping it on there.
I'm not worried about all that. I'm asking if you hired anybody to do this for you? You said Sewell.
Sewell, they're already engaged. But I'm.
That's okay. And do we get to shuffle our papers and distract from your talking as you've been doing to everybody else that you don't like commenting? I've got it all on record. You've been very distracting, shuffling papers, getting loud to distract from people that are talking. It's worthy of a formal complaint, and I will be filing one.
Thank you.
All right, I will move that.
Can I just ask a quick question, Mr. Sheriff?
Yeah.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Carleen Behringer, and I'm the trial court administrator for the district. I just have a question. When you showed the plans and you have that the building called the Justice Center, could you just explain me what all was going to be included in that Justice Center? And if there was any courtroom space that was going to be?
Potentially. I mean, if we if it's three stories, it would be 150,000 square feet, which would be three times. If it's four stories, it could be 200,000 square feet, which is four times. And yes, I envision a need personally. I think we're going to outgrow our current courthouse. Absolutely.
Yeah, that's already happened.
I mean, I believe it.
Yeah, that's already happening.
But the voters get a say before we say yes to 100 million bucks.
I think really, your concerns are valid. What we have to do is, instead of pushing something forward that takes land that we won't be able to replace, the key players need to sit down and look at the future growth because you guys have outgrown your space. And it does originally, if you look back to that town hall, the discussion was about using that for that growth to include giving the space to the courts, to make a senate. It's not just a jail. And what has not been answered is, we can say how much we need an RV campground for the $25 a day. Nobody's actually arguing not to do the campground. They're just saying, put it in a place that doesn't exist on encumbered land so that we have the option because we're putting the planning aside to say we have to for the grant. But actually, the easiest answer is, stop doing these memorandums of understanding that are not legal because the department that issues the grant sees the dysfunction, and they don't they don't feel confident that we can get it done, let alone, we should not, and this is my opinion, enter into a grant for the money if we know we are going to tear it down, which is because that's not honest. And that will negatively impact the taxpayers in the future when we want more money, because no one's going to say, oh, you guys flushed our money down the toilet because you guys couldn't figure out how to plan for future planning. I think your comment and the sheriff's are exactly what we need to do and let the fair board move forward on their existing land so we can preserve the expansion of a system because we have talked a lot about selling that and moving things over and using some of the proceeds of that to fund. But you can't do that if you've now made this land fairground land. And it is not the same. Fairground land, yes, you can say it's county land. It's not exactly the same as county land once you call it fairground land. And that keeps getting stated as it's all county land. It is not the same. And so we remove our ability to address the continued growth that we keep talking about for everything else in the county, except when it comes to the Justice Center. We pretend we don't see the growth need. But if we put the campground there and we never move that campground, where does the justice system grow? Where is the property that we can afford? And it's because they're not we're not planning together. We're just choosing for no reason to use this parcel.
Well, if there comes a point where we are planning, I would like to be included, and I'm sure the judges would like to be included, and the Idaho Supreme Court too, because they would be providing IT assistance.
Absolutely. And I think that should be something we do.
It would include all the courtrooms and all the other.
Yes, thank you.
Brian Domke, for the record. I would just like to state, as a licensed professional who does land planning as part of my career, a conceptual plan has no merit or value unless there's pertinent data that researches the onsite conditions to be presented with that data, with that plan. For example, without a geotechnical evaluation of the soils, both for the parking area and for the foundation of a structure, you really can't speak to reasonable cost and/or ability to build a single-floor or multi-story structure. These are all very pertinent issues. But if we're going to have a really open, honest conversation about a win-win scenario, that data needs to be represented clearly so the evaluation can be done to, number one, understand if it's reasonable for such a proposal to move forward. And then, number two, understand whether or not the cost to move forward with that type of a project could be borne by the taxpayers. So there are a lot of steps and phases that happen within planning for such a capital project, and I don't see those being represented. So it's it's not fair to the community to propose something as a win-win without additional data being provided for everyone to understand if that's actually a reasonable concept or mock-up that's been proposed. Typically, the early stages of a project like this would have numerous concepts considered, the pros and cons of each one weighed, and that background data of onsite evaluation performed so that technical evaluation can be given and real decisions can be made based on facts. So I just I think it's very important that if we're going to do a duck and pony show with these types of images, that we have good data to back it up. It's it's the right thing to do from a planning perspective for the fair board to pursue that type of a planning effort. But there's a significant amount of work that has to be done, and that should be properly presented.
Thank you. Thank you. So I'm going to do two separate motions. Yeah.
Dodi Glass for the record. I just wanted to go back over every meeting you say you need to go to legal representation and get all this data. And now you keep getting legal information and quite valid information from people that are in the business. So but watching your face, your face says, I don't care what any of these professionals that are putting forth. You've made your decision, and it's your decision, not anybody else's. You're going to go forward with every motion agent makes. It's going to be back to your original request, and it's just for the record. There's a lot of legal information that's been presented, planning information, you know, court people. They all represent us, not your sure decision. Please listen to them. We, the people. Thank you.
Thank you. So you were going to make a motion?
Yes, I move that the April 27, 2023 memorandum to engage Sewell and Associates for $25,000 for a property line adjustment be vacated based on the fact that there was no unforeseen circumstances and that we prior that the memorandum of understanding is not a valid document.
I'd like to address a couple of things. One, this has been reviewed by legal and signed by both the fair board and the Board of County Commissioners. And this was the MOU. And the MOU is exceedingly specific where it says, the authority to apply for and administer grants. As the fee simple owner of the fairgrounds, the county shall be solely responsible for all grants which may affect or impact that property. And the Board of County Commissioners shall be the entity responsible for grant application, administration, and compliance. That is the current agreement that was signed by both the fair board and the Board of County Commissioners this year. That was drafted by legal. In addition, this memorandum for the scope of work for Sewell and Associates was drafted by Bill Wilson. It did go through it. In addition, there was a contract that was included in that meeting that was clearly brought forth on the April 27 meeting. There has not been a motion that was in our packet for us to be able to reflect upon. This has been voted on, this matter has been voted on four times, and three of them have been consistent. I will not be seconding this motion as it has been discussed multiple times and has been voted on multiple times.
To be to be clear and accurate, Bill Wilson reviewed it. And then when information was given, that it did not require a replating of the fairgrounds. That changed this document. So we have to be honest with, it was reviewed, but additional information was given that showed that this memo was not actually correct. And it doesn't matter whether or not it's the commissioners that make a decision. We are representatives of the people, and you don't have any of the people at the table that need to be at the table for such a decision. And so it doesn't make sense when you hear the objective legal issues related to what you attempted to do on Thursday and the prior information presented that this is encumbered land, we would have to pay it back. It would be our $25,000 that had to pay for this entanglement. You've provided nothing other than, I've already made a statement. And that is not transparent. And that does not have even the employees of the county who are impacted by the growth needed because they're struggling in buildings that are too small or they don't have the growth opportunity. You're making a decision without telling us why. You're just saying, I already said what I wanted the week before. The attorney for the fair wants to make a statement.
Thank you very much. I just want to make a comment about the scope of legal review. The scope, the question at issue, and the MOU contains it, is a citation to Idaho.
Can we be clear? What the MOU he is addressing is not this one. He's addressing the prior one side.
Wait a minute, stop. You made a motion. You did not second it. I did not second it. That issue is dead. There is no discussion. So go on to your next motion.
My next motion is. My motion is with respect to the stated memorandum of understanding dated April 27, 2023, wherein Bonner County Commissioners identified the piece of land located at 10-57 North-2W be used exclusively for the Bonner County Fair, exclusively as a campground be vacated based on the information presented in this meeting and in prior meetings. And to reiterate that their memorandum does not allow for us to park.